The October 27, 2015 Cape Elizabeth zoning board of appeals meeting to order. The first order of business is to approve minutes from past meetings. I think the only past meeting that we have a quorum to approve the minutes is for the July 28, 2015 meeting. Does anybody have a motion for the July 28, 2015 meeting minutes?
For both minutes.
Second.
All in favor? So that's approved for two to nothing. And as far as the September 22, 2015 meeting minutes, we do not have a quorum for that meeting. We don't have a quorum for the minutes of that meeting, so we will save those for the next meeting. We have no old business, so we'll move right into the new business. The first order of new business, which is continued from last meeting, is to hear the request continued from September 22, 2015 of Stephen and Ann Mesterovich.
Mesterovich.
Mesterovich, thank you. For a variance to construct an addition on the front of their home at 10 Beacon Lane, map U-15, lot 64. The new construction is proposed to be 17 feet 8 inches from the front property line, while the zoning ordinance requires 25 feet. Mr. and Mrs. Mesterovich?
Good evening, zoning board of appeals. Thank you for letting me try again tonight. My name is Steve Mesterovich. I live at 10 Beacon Lane, along with my wife and our three children, and we've lived there since 2001. I'm here to ask for variance construct an addition to the front of our house. We'd like to move the kitchen out to the front. In moving it forward, it would give us views of the east or working lighthouse. We're basically catty corner from the west light. Our house was originally built in '68 or '69, and at that time, there were no other homes in the area, so the house had a clear view of both lighthouses and very good ocean views. When the original owner sold it, the next owner became so upset because houses started to fill in, and they blocked his view of the lighthouse. He went as far as trying to buy a lot next to the lighthouse and build a house, and apparently it was a -- I found an article in the Historical Society about it, and there was hundreds of people that signed a petition against it. He never got to build this house, so he moved the failment. Our addition, I don't think, would have any natural environment effects, as it's going to be built on flat ground, grass. There are some foundation plantings that would be moved. There's no trees that would be disturbed. As far as the character of the neighborhood, Beacon Lane is a mix of architectural styles, sizes, so I don't think our addition would appear to be out of place. Nor do I think it would ruin any of Butters' views, cast any shadows, or have any detrimental effects on any of Butters'. Significant economic injury. I did a survey, which I handed out in the last packet, of the land values of Beacon Lane. Now Beacon Lane basically is two different parts. The western part of Beacon Lane is 10-foot wide. Most of the lots are over an acre. Where east Beacon Lane, the houses are all about half an acre, but if you look at the dollar value on the east, it's considerably more, even though the lots are half the size. So I believe if we are allowed to construct this addition and to be able to have better ocean views and views of the lighthouse, that it would increase the value of our home. When I was here last month, there was a request for our deed, which I presented, and there was questions about where our property lines end. Beacon Lane is a private road, and there is a right-of-way, and I've included some deeds from other properties highlighted that show that there was a right-of-way. And as far as I can tell, the right-of-way started in 1828, when the US government bought the land in that area from farmer Dyer and built the lighthouse. The government sold the land in 1959, so I don't know if that right-of-way expires or it stays. So when we had the survey done, the property, originally our deeds said it was 361 feet deep. When the survey was done, they gave me a figure of 356 feet on that side, so that's 10 feet short of the road. So there's a question on who owns the right-of-way? Do I own the 10 feet of grass that I cut every week? And our surveyor told me it costs a lot of money and a lot of time to try and figure any of that out. So if there's any questions about what I've presented or the information I've presented...
I have a couple. You've given us this chart.
Yes.
It shows your number 10 Beacon Lane, correct?
Correct.
So these guys to the east of you are the ones that were subsequently built?
Yes.
But before you bought your own man?
Excuse me?
They were all built before you bought your property?
Yes, prior to me owning it, yes.
Right, I mean, they were there when you bought into it?
Yes.
Just so I understand this chart. So years, these, all the eastern ones are listed as having a lighthouse view and ocean views. Yours is too. It's the only one of the western ones that already has...
Okay. If I may, the west lighthouse I have a view of, the east, is blocked by the other houses. And one thing I neglected to mention is, there's one house, which is across the street, which is part of the east Beacon Lane, whose land value is less than ours. I know the person, I've been in the house. They have no views of the east light. My neighbor told me they used to have views, the light came right in the house, and somebody added on to the back of the house, and now that view is gone. And even though they're right next to the west light, because the west light is six feet from the road, and they're obviously back at least 25 feet, they really have no view. So in my opinion, that's why their land value is less than all the others and less than ours. So if I stood out on my front lawn and went out 18 feet, that's where the view of the light is. And that's why we're trying to get the seven-foot-eight variance to move the kitchen out front.
But again, that was reflected in your purchase price when you bought it, correct?
Can I ask a little bit again?
Sorry?
Yeah, definitely.
So I think what we're asking is, what is the significant economic injury? If you purchased your home based on what was there, it was already there.
I'm just saying that if I was able to move out, that would increase the value. Like my neighbor's, whose house was there and had the view, and now the view is gone. And I don't think she fought against this addition. So now I believe she has economic loss, but...
Any other questions? Thank you. Any public comment? And Ben, did we receive any public comment or letters?
We received one comment in support of the application.
Okay. And all the Butters were notified?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no public comment, just like to open it up for board discussion. I'd like to echo kind of what I'm hearing, at least from a couple of the questions. I'm a little bit concerned about the lack of economic injury, at least in terms of the, you know, variance applications we've seen before. It's usually a variance to allow a structure that would be in, along the lines of what's in the neighborhood. And I'm not hearing that here necessarily.
So there's two issues that come up between the last hearing that we had and today. And what is the comparison between this type of variance with, for example, where someone has a house that does not have a garage? So they bought the house without the garage, but now they want the garage. So that's something similar to this application, where you bought the house with marginal views, and then over time, there's some buildup there. So that there is a value that can be improved in their house if they have the variance and have a better view to improve the use and value of their home, similar to a garage. And then this data here is, from my understanding, is that this was showing that there's a difference between houses that have a view that does not. So if the board members are saying that there's a, you buy what you get, and that's that, or you consider this more like a garage concept, is that they bought it without the views, and now they wish to have a view?
I'm looking at this chart, and what I'm seeing is that most of the west lots do not have a view. And so the west lots generally don't have a view, and the east lots do. It's a little bit different, at least kind of, my initial take is it's a little bit different from a garage, where there are some houses on lots that have garages in a neighborhood and others that don't. This is generally, the houses on the west side of the street don't have views, and the ones on the east do. That's not to say that the ones on the west side couldn't be all improved to have views, I'm not sure, but, and I'm not, and again, this isn't necessarily something that we would be taking into consideration, but are we gonna, is there now gonna be, everybody on the east, on the west side is going to be improving their home to get views? I mean, there's a bit of a slippery slope that I think we might be heading down if we approve this variance.
So that is the same slippery slope than when we deal with garages on a neighborhood that, over time, a garage is built up, it's progress, and so over time, more homes have a garage. There's no doubt there's a slippery slope, hence the variance issue.
I mean, and you're right, each one, each, just because you grant one variance doesn't mean that a variance would be appropriate for each home on the east side, I'm sorry, on the west side of Beacon Lane. Presumably, they'd have to apply for a variance, and it would have to meet all the other requirements.
Yeah, a couple things. One is, the garage is kind of an all-or-nothing situation. I mean, they've been living in Maine in this house for X years, they'd like to have a garage in their dotage, I speak from experience. I think the view is an enhancement of the view, which they already have by their own account, number one. Number two, what we're talking about here is the last seven feet. This isn't like they can't do an addition. There's a lot of room on the house to do an addition. This is about the last seven feet. It's where we're, that's what's imposing on the setback, and it's imposing very significantly. It's not like 10 or 20 percent. I mean, it's imposing significantly in the setback. Another specific difference from the case you mentioned is that I think that's a side variance for the garage, so the immediate impact is really on the neighbors. I mean, this is in front. This comes right down the road, significantly farther down the road into the setback. So I think, from my point of view, from a precedent point of view, I would think this is saying, gee, all these other properties were built, zoning was put into place to say, we don't really want neighborhoods to look like this anymore. Now we have what we want to improve our view, so we want to have an addition that's not just a 10-foot addition, it's a 17-foot addition, so we can really come down in there. That's right in the front on the street. I mean, that's, what is your criteria going to be when anybody else comes in and says, gee, I want to improve my view, this is what I bought, this is what I've been living with, it's not necessity, it would just make it nicer? So what is the point of the zoning?
Two points. The first is that, is there a significance here on these facts, that there's a private road, not a public road in front? And the second part is that the applicant still has to demonstrate there is a loss of value of some sort, whereas, for example, the neighborhood has developed over time, and that that house has been left as it originally was. And so that may not be the case we have here, in that it's just the circumstances of the lot. So what I'm saying is that each applicant, the west side of that street, would still have to meet, come before us and demonstrate that there's an economic loss. It's not an easy process to get a variance.
So he just, they just get this spreadsheet and just come back to us with the same exact argument, and we say, oh yeah, sure. I think the comparison of the garage is not necessarily a good one, because when we've granted them for that, there's, you know, in 1952B, D, no other, these are all alternatives to a variance that's available to the petitioner. A lot of these garage issues are on small lots that have setback issues, that, you know, there's a lineup of houses, and one doesn't have a garage, so they want to put one in, but they're going, you know, five feet over a setback, that sort of thing. These people have plenty of room to build their kitchen. They have a pretty good-sized lot, they can go out the back 100 feet, hundreds of feet, or the side, or wherever. There is a practical alternative to their addition of making more usable space in the kitchen and so forth.
What about, the significant economic injury definition includes standards which would prevent the applicant from having a structure, accessory structure comparable in size, location, and number to those of other lot owners in the immediate neighborhood, but in no case fewer than 10 of the nearest property owners? Are there 10 property owners that have a view? Is that the standard that we're applying?
Mr. Chair, what's the, where's the section?
I'm just reading it out of the application, but it's in, sorry.
Page two at the top?
What's that?
It's a page two of the application.
Yeah, page two. I'm sorry, page three, the middle. I mean, just looking at the chart, I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, houses that have these? You know, and I think this is sort of, at least in my mind, sort of crystallizing what I see as the problem with this type of variance, which is being done for a view. It's, I mean, the language is comparable in size, location, and number, and what they're asking for is a variance to allow construction that will provide them with a view.
An improved...
An improved view, where the significant economic injury language, we're supposed to be looking at the size, location of the structure. And I'm not, even if I were inclined to grant a variance based on, to provide an enhanced view, don't we need to compare how the structure looks? It's giving them a view, but how does this variance affect the neighborhood? And how does, you know, this encroachment on the boundary line look compared with the other structures? So we're kind of, we're talking about what it's giving them is a view, but when we're looking at variances, we're usually comparing the size of structures on lots. And, you know, other, for example, when we often consider a garage, we're looking at where other garages sit on lots. And here, I don't have any pictures or any evidence to see where, how other houses sit on lots, and how close they encroach, and do any of them encroach into setbacks.
The testimony of the last meeting was that, that basically, there's a private way that has, the private way that Beacon Lane runs through, but they are not, the houses are equidistant from the actual lane. So there's, let's say, a straight line of property line, and then the lane kind of meanders down below it. So their home appears to be further back than other homes, was the testimony that we heard about. So it wouldn't necessarily be of character in the neighborhood.
And one of the other documents that was provided at the first round is that there's a list of properties with the frontage from the street or the setback, roughly similar numbers with the various incorporated. So we're not talking completely out of character with the neighborhood, plus private street, plus the meandering aspect of that Beacon Lane. But I agree that there's a slippery slope element here, in that if we're looking particularly at that provision dealing with the definition for significant economic injury, they say no fewer than 10 properties that meet a similar requirement. So there is some data that would support variance, but not, I don't think, to the level that's going to be for comfort value, that there should be a variance for this particular property. Certainly, there, as compared to the other properties in this neighborhood, there is, this house and location seems to be, I won't say disadvantaged, but somewhat different than the other homes in the area, for the purposes of the view. I do agree that the kitchen and views can go out the side and the back. What's wrong with that? Well, there's a preference to have the view of one of the lighthouses.
We'll close board discussion. I think I'd like to make a motion.
On the material that was submitted, there's findings of fact. I am troubled with a couple of line items here, because I don't think it reflects the testimony that was in also our discussion. So on number three and four, I don't think the test has been met for those two.
Okay, I mean, my view would be most, I mean, it obviously depends which way we're going, but I view those findings, would generally be findings that we would be making if we're approving, granting the variance.
Yes.
I guess maybe we should get a general sense. Are we moving in that direction? I'm inclined to deny it.
I am also.
I'm inclined to deny the...
I am also.
Well, there's three.
That's three. So one of the three of us like to make a motion?
I'll move to decline the motion.
Move to deny the variance?
Whatever it is, yes.
So the motion would be to deny the request of Stephen and Ann Mesterovich for a variance to construct an addition on the front of their home at 10 Beacon Lane, map U-15, lot 64. The new construction is proposed to be 17 feet 8 inches from the front property line, while the zoning ordinance requires 25 feet. Okay, so the motion would be, a motion to deny the request of Stephen and Ann Mesterovich for a variance to construct an addition on the front of their home at 10 Beacon Lane, map U-15, lot 64. The new construction is proposed to be 17 feet 8 inches from the front property line, while the zoning ordinance requires 25 feet. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I have four in favor and all opposed? All right, so the request for a variance is denied, four to one. Terms of additional, so the findings of fact would be, Stephen and Ann Mesterovich are the owners of record of the property located at 10 Beacon Lane, map U-15, lot 64. The subject property is a non-conforming lot in the R.A. zone. The zoning ordinance, section 19-4-3A1A, requires the front setback to be 25 feet. The proposed expansion of their principal structure will be 17 feet 8 inches from the front property line. I mean, these additional findings are all, I mean, they're not findings that, they're all findings in support of the variance, so I don't think we would be making those findings. Ben, do we need to make any other findings that we're denying? Do we need to make findings in the negative for these?
Yes.
Okay. So the additional findings, I guess, here's additional finds that I would propose. The need for a variance is not due to the unique circumstances of the property, the need for a variance is not due to the unique circumstances of the property and to the general conditions of the neighborhood. So I don't think we really discussed two.
And they don't all need to be negative.
Right.
If any of them are negative, it fails.
Okay. Well, which, hold on, you can make this quick. I mean, the big one, at least in my mind, was the practical difficulty and the language which follows from that, which was a significant economic injury. So, I mean, we have to find that there's a practical difficulty for there to be a variance, to approve a variance. So. So the zoning order appeals may grant variances from the terms of the ordinance, provided that there is a substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance and a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause practical difficulty. So, the additional finding that I would propose is that a literal enforcement of the ordinance in this case would not cause practical difficulty as defined by 30 AM RSA 4353-4C.
You have a not there, which suggests that you're in favor of the variance. Can you restate, say that, please?
Yes. Thank you. A literal enforcement of the ordinance would not cause practical difficulty. If it would cause practical difficulty, that's correct. The not should be in there. Okay, so again, the, the additional findings of fact is a literal enforcement of the ordinance would not cause practical difficulty as defined by 30 AM RSA 4353-4C. I think we can leave it at that. All in favor of that additional, the, all in favor of the findings of fact and the additional findings of fact? Okay, so that's five, nothing.
So you're, you're striking one through six and just adding the one you just stated?
Correct. All right, so the request for a variance is denied. Thank you for your time. Okay, moving on to item number two, which is to hear the administrative appeal of Apple Tree Cottage LLC regarding the code enforcement officer's decision to approve building permit 150525. The building permit is for two accessory structures at 15 Sunrise Drive, map U-14, lot 38. Before we start this, one of the parties in this case is represented by Attorney Schutz. I used to work with him at Preity Flaherty. I don't believe this would in any way impact my findings or decisions in this. So I don't believe I need to refuse myself, but I do just want to make that known.
I also want to make known that I live on Hannibal Cove Road, which is one of the streets next to Sunrise Terrace, I'm sorry, Sunrise Drive. I do not know the party seeking the building permit, but I do know the owner of the Apple Tree Cottage LLC. He's a resident on Hannibal Cove Road. If there's an issue for my being on this board, let me know, otherwise I'll, I could sit out in the audience if there's a conflict.
To me, as long as you feel like you can be impartial, it doesn't sound like.
Okay.
It's a problem. I guess I'd like to just start this with Ben, since it's an appeal of administrative, of appeal of a permit. If you could just give us some background regarding the permit that you issued.
On August 21st, 2015, I approved a building permit for two accessory structures. They are 12 feet by 12 feet, two separate accessory structures. And the proposed use for the structures is bedrooms. And then I had correspondence with the owner of Apple Tree Cottage LLC. And we had some correspondence and he disagreed with my finding that those should be allowed as accessory structures and subsequently filed an appeal.
Chair, I have a point of order. My understanding is that the gentleman, Apple Tree LLC is appealing, right? So he's not the owner of the land. He's in a butter, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Attorney Schutz for Apple Tree Cottage.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Sigmund Schutz. I'm attorney for Apple Tree Cottage LLC, which is the appellant and in a butter to this property. The question before the board is whether two additional one-bedroom cubes are clearly incidental to a one-bedroom cottage. Our position is that you can't be incidental to yourself. Essentially, it's more house. It's not incidental to the house. An additional bedroom, these two additional bedrooms would essentially triple the amount of guest space at this property from a one-bedroom cottage to a three-bedroom rental property. We don't believe that's clearly incidental to the existing use. It's an expansion of the existing use. It in effect is the existing use tripled. The ordinance, the Cape Elizabeth ordinance, and there's, gives many indications that commercial, non-residential uses in the RA zone are to be looked upon with skepticism, if not disfavor. There's concern about short-term rental uses in this zone. An ordinance was passed to regulate that particular use. There are restrictions on motel uses, on boarding house uses. If you want to have a bed and breakfast use in this zone, which would be occupied by the owner, you've got to have 60,000 square feet, in other words, 20,000 square feet per bedroom. So we believe that there's plenty of intent, to the extent there's ambiguity, in the Cape Elizabeth ordinance that would suggest that these types of expansions of commercial rental uses should be limited and looked on skeptically. The practical effect of allowing these two additional one-bedroom cubes, as Mr. Bond refers to them, is that they are essentially adding additional dwelling space closer to the property line that would be allowed if the house were expanded. In other words, this house could be expanded, but if it's expanded, it's subject to a 25-foot setback. As interpreted by code enforcement, these accessory structures are only subject to a 15-foot setback. So what we end up with by allowing these types of accessory uses are bedrooms with 10 feet closer to the property line than would otherwise be permissible if Mr. Bond took the decision to simply expand his house. We think that creates less privacy for neighbors, that creates noise issues for neighbors, that creates light issues for neighbors, and is incompatible with the ordinance. These accessory structures, as we understand it from the application, are proposed to be accompanied by, with exterior showers. We have some concerns about having additional bedrooms that don't have bathrooms. We have some concern with allowing these types of accessory structures without any connection to the compatibility, the capability of a septic system to handle the amount of wastewater that may be generated by additional bedrooms if they're permitted via these accessory, potentially mobile structures. In short, we think the practical effect of allowing these kinds of additional, tripling of bedrooms via accessory structures would be contrary to the purposes of the ordinance and cause problems. If there's any concern about allowing this structure as an accessory to a residential owner-occupied use, then the zoning board should direct that the permit be conditioned on that use, so that we don't have a precedent that says, well, short-term rental, renters can start adding cubes out back to expand the number of guest rooms without limit. We've also questioned the setback determination. Basically, for non-conforming lots, there's a chart, section 1943, that has a list of setbacks applicable to structures on non-conforming lots. The setback, side setback per that chart in section 1943 is 25 feet. Therefore, we've questioned why this, these are approved with a 20-foot setback. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have? Thank you.
Any questions at this time?
I would point out two facts for the record. The septic system was upgraded to a three-bedroom septic system and newly installed to account for the wastewater, if possible, from, from these new structures. And, and I'm not aware of any outside showers, nor am I in my, in my, if they meet the plumbing code, so.
I have. I'm just trying to understand something here. The expansion could have taken place in the house, but wouldn't have, you're sort of suggesting it wouldn't have been able to meet code on the lot if they put two more bedrooms in the house? Did I understand that correctly?
No, I'm suggesting if you expand the house, you're subject to a 25-foot setback. But if you put one of these bedrooms in a cube, you can put it within 15 feet per the code enforcement officer's determination.
Okay, but you could expand the, the house on that lot?
Sure, and that would be very compatible with the neighborhood. If you want to have a slightly larger cottage, that's one thing. If we want to put exterior cubes out back and have people living in units or renting units that have no facilities out back on lots, that to us is a problem as a neighbor. We think that would impact our property value and also adds, well, it would triple the level of use of the property. We don't think under the ordinance is clearly incidental to the primary use. It's a tripling of the primary use.
If they had come in with this exact same footprint and called one of them garden shed and the other one a playhouse, an outside playhouse for children, what objections would you have had?
We have, would have no concerns with that. Again, if we look at the definition of accessory structure in the ordinance, we're talking about uses that are not customarily and typically contained within the primary structure. So the definition of accessory building or structure, garage, gazebo, greenhouse, pool, tennis court, wharf, dock, landing or boathouse, what do those all have in common? They're not primary uses of the main structure typically in Cape Elizabeth.
Yeah, I understand. So if they'd labeled the application different, you wouldn't have had a problem?
Right.
Structures could have been exactly the same, correct?
To qualify as an accessory building or structure, per the definition, the use has to be clearly incidental.
Okay, so if a use was an outdoor playhouse for children so they can go and raise a ruckus and don't disrupt the household, and yet there's a garden shed, those would qualify, correct?
Correct.
So the structures could be exactly the same?
Possibly, with the exception of the exterior shower.
Well, if you've been out gardening, you might want to shower before you come in the house. And if the kids have been carrying on, they might want to shower before you bring them in the house.
You might have a shower associated with a swimming pool, I would agree.
I mean, it seems to me it's a tricky business to say that, you know, if these applicants, it's a fairly simple ploy to change the wording, since you don't have to change the structure at all to meet the requirement as you've defined it.
I think for that reason, it would be important, if this were permitted, to condition the use going forward, such that we're not looking at uses that replicate the use of the primary structure.
And how do you enforce that? I mean, that's a matter of moving furniture.
Yeah, it would be the same type of enforcement that would be applicable to any structure. But again, the definition of an accessory building or structure hinges on the use being incidental, unless you've got to look at the use.
So, so if it's a property that has one bathroom and it's in the main house, and these are just wooden boxes out there, without their own plumbing, without bathrooms, how are they not incidental to the, to the use of the main structure? They can't, they're not their own dwelling units.
They're not dwelling units because they don't have a bedroom, a kitchen, you know, but they're being used as bedrooms. And the primary use of the structure is as, as a bedroom use.
So if the offending cube were moved so that it isn't, so it actually conforms with the correct, what you see as a correct setback, would that solve the problem?
No, that's a separate, independent issue in terms of what setback should apply to an accessory, a new accessory structure on a non-conforming lot. Could the applicant renovate the existing cottage to add a bedroom? Sure. And that's what he ought to do. If he wants to have additional bedroom, then comply with the setbacks and the requirements to renovate your existing building.
Right, but you said that that would make him conform with a different setback, the 25-foot setback.
Right.
What I'm saying is, why, can he renovate the way he's renovating or adding the way he's adding, but still conform to that setback, but just have there be different, different buildings?
Oh, could he possibly move the cubes back?
Right.
So they're 25 foot feet from the neighbor?
Right.
Probably he could. That wasn't what was proposed.
One of, one of the definitions or one of the included, but not limited to, examples of an accessory building or structure is a home workshop. And that's defined in the ordinance as a workshop located within a principal building or within an accessory building, which is used primarily by the occupants of the dwelling unit for personal use and not a commercial use. And I guess just that the concern that I'm having is, I'm hearing that this is going to be used, you know, this is for sleeping, this is for sleeping, these are additional bedrooms. That's not what the owners of the property are saying. And they're just, there seems to be this gray area with what, how are these structures going to be used? And, you know, some, some of the explanation for how these structures are going to be used, coming from the property owner, sounds to me like it could be a workshop type of use. So where do we draw that line?
Sure, I think one way to draw that line is to condition the future use of these cubes so that they don't become bedrooms. In other words, I think the more, and so that you've precluded the use of the thing for an improper purpose, for a non-incidental purpose. I think in terms of whether they're bedrooms or not, I mean, the face of the application says existing, number of existing bedrooms, one, proposed bedrooms, two. You've heard from the code enforcement officer that the septic system has been upgraded for the additional bedrooms. The drawing attached to the permit application shows an outdoor shower attached to each one of these units. It's labeled outdoor shower. So, you know, the, in the, the submission from the owner seems to say, well, look, they're not only going to be bedrooms, they may be other things. Well, if that's the case, then look, let's condition this that they're not going to be used as bedrooms. And you can use that for other permissible purposes as proposed. The other side of it, though, is you can't say, well, we're going to put in this structure and we're going to use it for anything we feel like using it for. Any possible use that we may make of this structure going forward will necessarily be incidental. I don't think you can have it both ways. You got a primary use and an incidental use. There's a divide between those two. So you can't say, well, we're going to use it for anything we feel like using it for and take the position that that's necessarily clearly incidental. I mean, I think if the applicant wants to come back and say, look, we want to use, this is a workshop use, it's not going to be used as sleeping quarters, this is not going to be put to a, you know, rental type of commercial use, a non-residential use under your ordinance, that's fine. Then let's have an approval granted on that basis. But what the applicant has come to the code enforcement officer for is, let's take a one-bedroom cottage, triple it to a three-bedroom rental. That's just not clear, you know, again, just your definition of an accessory, it's not clearly incidental. And the, and the ordinance uses the word clearly, which means unmistakable, free from doubt. It's hard to argue that this isn't the primary use expanded threefold.
It seems to me, in a way above all, what we want from people is that they come to us in good faith. And these people have. And it seems to me you're resting so heavily on the clearly incidental language invites gamesmanship. I mean, as I say, what's tricky about this whole section, I think, is that it's I mean, as I say, what's tricky about this whole section, I think, is that it's not like it's a twenty-five-foot setback and we're going to allow three feet because otherwise they can't build a garage. Or it's twenty-five percent coverage and it's, you know, it's quantitative. There's nothing quantitative here. And as I said, the structure, one structure can, the same structure could be a garden shed, which is okay, it could be a greenhouse, which is okay, it could be a bedroom, which you say is not okay, but that's just a matter of which furniture you move in and out after you own it. I mean, it seems to me, we have to deal with, Ben has these people walking into his office. We want them to be candid. And we want somehow to have this work. And it seems to me it's like somehow this is, you know, if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck and talks like a duck, Ben has to say it's a duck. And I, I just, I have, I have a real problem if, if you can, if the whole issue, you can flip it, flip it away with a, with a change of labels, there's something wrong with our decisions.
I guess what I would say is, your ordinance contains lots of indications that additional dwelling, habitable space, accessory dwelling units, guest rooms, which are defined with the motel definition, boarding rooms, bedrooms with B and Bs, all of these uses which add to the sleeping quarters on a, on a property are defined, many of them are prohibited, many of them are subject to additional application requirements. This is not, and I would suggest, on the edge, this is adding, making a one-bedroom rental, a three-bedroom rental.
Toilet facilities are also a primary component of a dwelling unit, but it's relatively common for someone to put toilet facilities in an accessory structure. And it's actually relatively common for people to create additional living space in accessory structures. There's a lot of precedent in Cape Elizabeth for people putting additional living space, whether it's overflow sleeping areas, playrooms, bathrooms, in a workshop. There's a lot of precedent in Cape Elizabeth for people taking components of a dwelling unit and having them in accessory buildings.
I can say is, I'm not aware of any prior appeals that have plumbed this issue or addressed this issue, but your ordinance says the use speaks to a use being clearly incidental and related to the principal building. I could imagine a situation where you might say, well, look, we can't get an expansion of our, our, our house put in, so we're going to have three cubes. One's going to be a bedroom, one's going to be a kitchen, one's going to be a bathroom. It's not, it's not a new dwelling unit. These are all permissible accessory structures. We're going to have about, and there's no limit on accessory structures under your orders, how about five extra bath, bedrooms out back for a short-term rental property? Permissible? Are those not replicating the primary use of the structure, particularly for a rental that's, as sleeping quarters?
I had a follow-up question. Is, is the issue that you can put one of these cubes within the setback of fifteen feet? Or what happens if there's plenty of space to build five cubes, for example? And then it's within the overarching setback, so it's, I think it's thirty feet on the sides and twenty-five feet in the front? Would, would you, sorry, would your client object to that issue?
I think my suggestion to you there is that we don't want people putting bedrooms closer to twenty-five feet from the property line. And it would be with this accessory cubes, the bedroom cubes that are being proposed, we can put bedrooms fifteen feet from the property line. For neighbors, if permissible, we'd be able to put those on either side of the property line, so twenty-foot closer than would otherwise be permitted. If you're going to expand your existing structure, you've got to say within twenty-five feet of the property line, which enhances privacy, you know, it addresses light and noise types of issues. So I'm a neighbor, I like the fact that the nearest bedroom to my property is another ten feet away. And what this application is saying is, we'd like to push that considerably closer to the boundary.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess can we next hear from the Bonds?
My name's Chris Bond, and my wife and I own Fifteen Sunrise Drive. It's a twenty-four foot by twenty-eight foot structure. And I just thought I'd give you a little sense of scale. I looked online today and the Census Bureau says that in two thousand and ten, which was the latest data that I could find, the average-sized house in the Northeast that was constructed in two thousand and ten was twenty-six hundred square feet. That doesn't fit within this, this floor area, so I went for the average US structure, which is twenty-four hundred square feet. And imagine if, if you take this wall that's at your backs and you go from this wall to that wall, and then all the way back to the exterior wall of this, of this floor, that's about twenty-six hundred, I'm sorry, twenty-four hundred square feet. So I measured, I measured it up, and if you look at this ribbon, if that's the arc that goes all the way back to the exterior wall, this ribbon going from the back wall to here represents the size of the structure we're talking about. And if you add on the two structures that are being appealed tonight, if you go back to this ribbon here, so when Sig says that it's going to triple, excuse me, when Sig says that it's going to triple the size of the structure, clearly it's not. We're moving from that yellow ribbon to that yellow ribbon. And even with the additional structures, we'll be at forty percent of the average single-family structure built in two thousand and ten in the United States. Forty percent. Now, Sig seems to suggest that what I really should have done was torn the building down. And ironically, that's exactly what my contractor suggested I do. He said, for the amount of money you're going to spend, Chris, you're going to get a much bigger structure. These are, we call this house the matchbox because it's so little. And it's right next door to another matchbox, which is very tiny. They're half-acre lots, little tiny houses. They've been there since about nineteen sixty. And both of them were fully depreciated. There was not much left to save. But they had been there since nineteen sixty. They're, they're sort of the un-Cape Elizabeth house, if you will. And for that reason, they kind of appealed to, appealed to my wife and I. And we went to our architect and he said, you shouldn't tear this house down, you should save it. You know, there's things you can do without destroying the original character of the house. It's not like there's some big architectural thing to them. There, it's not a particularly beautiful house, but it, but it is nice. And if I, just to give you a sense of how big it is, also if I stood here, that's it. And this is, so this is the bathroom right here. It's about eleven feet by eleven feet. And then there's a little bathroom that's about like so. And then there's a laundry room. And over here is the kitchen, a little eating area in this corner. And then this is where the litter room, right here. That's how big it is. And so you couldn't leave it the way it is. We had to replace the doors, we had to replace the roof, we had to re-site it. We replaced all the windows, we re-insulated it completely to modern standards, replaced all the interior walls with pine, we put in a whole new electrical service, we rebuilt the well, put in a new well pump, rewired all the outlets and lights, replaced all the lights, replaced all the plumbing fixtures except for the toilet, replaced the whole septic system. And after spending all that money, we still had a six-hundred-and-seventy-two-square-foot house. One bedroom. A big enough house for at most two people. Now, Sig seems to understand, or his client seems to understand, exactly how we're going to use this property. If he does, he knows more than I do. Now, short-term, I live on Route seventy-seven just by the ball field. I don't know where I'm going to be in the next five years. If I listen to my wife, we're going to probably be down on Sunrise Drive. I don't know what we're going to do. But whatever we do, this house will be nice enough that I would want to live there. I wouldn't want to be associated with it if it wasn't that nice. Sig is arguing that this is going to be a full-time three-bedroom house. It's not the case. This house is not big enough to support three full-time bedrooms. It's big enough to support one bedroom, as it has for the last fifty years, and then overflow space from time to time as people come and go. That's all it is. If we live there, it's going to be when family and friends come. The cubes were not designed to be bedroom-only. They're designed, yes, to accommodate sleeping. That's why we told Ben, you know, we want to put in a new septic system, we want to have the freedom to use three spaces, three bedrooms, so we put in a three-bedroom system. But home entertainment, home office, hobbies, general living space, these, these cubes will fulfill all of those things. When it's finished, Fifteen Sunrise Drive will not be a motel, as Apple Tree has asserted. When it's finished, it will be used in conformity with all of the zoning laws. Ben will make sure of that. As I stated in my brief, Apple Tree spills a fair bit of ink trying to make the case that our effort to build the twelve-foot by twelve-foot rooms is just the first step on our way to the next Motel Six in Hanaford Cove. Suffice it to say that your denial of Apple Tree's appeal this evening will not put the whole Hanaford Cove area on a slippery slope to large-scale commercial development. That left unchecked by the board will lead to unimaginable urban pains. Apple Tree's suggestion of the contrary are of course complete and utter nonsense. I own another property right up and over the hill on Two Lights Road. I've rented that since I moved here in nineteen eighty. It has continuously been improved, it is way better than when I bought it, it continues to be improved. One does not invest in a small six-hundred-and-seventy-two-square-foot house with aspirations of building a commercial motel, come what may of these cubes. The house has been seasonally rented for most of the past thirteen years by the previous owners. I don't think anybody in that area would argue that that's been harmful to the neighborhood. So despite the fact that my wife and I have no firm decisions about the long-term use of this property, including living there ourselves, even if it was used for seasonal rentals, it would have no more of a detrimental effect upon the area than has been in place for the last ten years, even with the cubes. Apple Tree's arguments that the twelve-by-twelve-foot structures are not clearly incidental and related to that of the principal building or use of the land is misplaced and an unreasonable interpretation of the ordinance. Apple Tree cites a vacated Superior Court case to make the legal argument that because sleeping is also a primary or main use of the house, as it currently is, it therefore cannot be by definition incidental use. Sleeping is sleeping, but I assure you, ladies and gentlemen, that the primary sleeping space will be inside the main structure. That's where the bathroom is, that's where the refrigerator is, that's where the washer and dryer is. That's the clear, obvious space for the place, sleeping to take place. Sleeping will not take place outside of the main structure, except as needed on an incidental and variable basis. Apple Tree's argument that the twelve-by-twelve-foot structures do not qualify as accessory structures because they are used exclusively or primarily for sleeping may be a correct argument in a different case, where the primary structure lacks any sleeping space at all. And I would agree with Sig. If the primaries, if we took the sleeping space out of the primary structure and converted it all to living, and then moved the sleeping outside, I think you have his argument. But that's not the case here. We are keeping the footprint of the primary structure as exactly as it was, the primary sleeping space will remain in the primary structure. Incidental sleeping use, recreate, home office use, photography, that will go outside. If the house did not provide sleeping accommodations, I'm sorry. In support of its arguments, Apple Tree cites Lane Construction Corp. versus Town of Washington as authority for the rule that for a use to be incidental, it must not be the primary use of the property, but rather one that is subordinate and minor in significance. The authority cited for this rule is a Superior Court case that held in relevant part that because a rock crusher is a primary part of mineral extraction, it cannot be an accessory use to mineral extraction. I don't know how that was cited for this fact pattern. However, that case was vacated by the Supreme Judicial Court of Maine, where the court found in Lane Construction Corp. versus Town of Washington, even though the terms of the zoning ordinance are defined by the court as a matter of law, whether or not the proposed structure or use meets the definition of the application thereof may be a matter of fact for the initial board determination. And if you find as a matter of fact that the uses I've described are incidental, that determination will be respected by the courts unless it is clearly erroneous. Applying that rule, the Supreme Judicial Court of Maine reversed the holding of the Superior Court opinion cited by Apple Tree, and instead upheld the planning board's decision that rock, rock crushing was permitted even though it was integral to the primary use of the property, that being mineral extraction. Therefore, under the Lane Construction Corp. as cited by Apple Tree, even though sleeping is integral to the principal use of the primary structure, this Board of Appeals may find as a factual matter that sleeping is a permitted use even though it goes hand-in-hand with the principal use. Further, although sleeping is the same no matter where it is done, the primary sleeping space is being served and will be served by the principal structure. The cubes will only serve as sleeping space when the primary structure's capacity is I will stop there. Are there any questions?
I have one little question. Where is the bathroom?
The bathroom is in the main structure, in the primary, oh, you mean, well.
The bathroom is, so here's the bathroom, here's the corner, so I'm in the bathroom, bathroom be right, right next, accessible only from the bedroom.
It's accessible only from the bedroom?
You have to go, you have to leave the living room, go into the bedroom, and then into the bathroom.
So anybody in the outside structures has to come into the house and walk through the other bedroom?
That was the case. However, what we did is we added a half bathroom, laundry, so there's a laundry room, a bathroom where you're sitting, there's now a toilet there.
Is that inside or outside?
It's inside the main structure.
So the half bathroom is now in the main structure, is in the middle of the main structure, is?
There's, there's, so here's the living, here's the bathroom, and then the main full, it's a three-quarter bath. And then if you went out around, there was a laundry room right where you're sitting. In that laundry room, there's now a half bathroom.
So does that have an outside door?
It, it, the outside door goes, yes, it goes out onto the deck.
Okay, but to take a shower or use a bath, you need to leave, if you were sleeping in the, in the outside structure, you have to walk across the lawn, go into the main house, go through a bedroom?
That's correct. That's correct.
Although the proposal has outdoor showers for both of the cubes?
No.
Okay. For one of them, or?
Neither of them.
Okay. Mr. Bond, how, how are the cubes anchored?
They are on sonotubes.
They're what?
They're on sonotubes.
Could you explain that to me?
Oh, I'm sorry, they're on concrete posts.
Okay. And, and are they heated?
Yes, they will be, they're going to have, we're debating whether we put in gas or electric. It looks like we're going to put in electric heat. electric. It looks like we're going to put in electric heat.
In your written draft response that you provided, and I think you mentioned this as well, you said that you and your wife really have made no firm decisions about the long-term use of this property. Is that correct?
That's correct. I will say how, the only long-term decision we've made is, and people ask us, "You're going to flip it, Chris?" The answer is no. If you want to ask me, will I own this property 10 years from now? Without hesitation, if I'm alive, I will own it.
Will you rent it?
The short-term answer to that is I do intend to rent it because I am not moving out of my house in the short term.
I'm also looking at that draft response, and you say in it that although sleeping is the same matter no matter where it's done, the cubes will only serve as a sleeping space when the primary structure's capacity is inadequate. Can you give me an example of how this might ordinarily arise in the course of the use of this property, particularly on a rental basis?
Well, the big question on a rental point of view is whether you're renting annually or seasonally. If you're renting annually, I think you're talking about a one- or two-person kind of affair, because the only other people who would be there would be children, and I'm not into renting, it's not going to be a college situation.
I think, I think you're, you're missing the point of my question. You say in here that the cubes will only serve as sleeping space when the primary structure capacity is inadequate. I'm asking you to give me an example of when that inadequacy would occur, especially in a rental situation.
Well, if there's a renter and they have guests come stay with them, they, I envision that somebody's not going to use the cube as their bedroom and not the primary structure. So if somebody's renting the primary structure and they have guests come, that would be a perfect situation for them to stay in one of the cubes.
Short-term rental versus long-term rental, same thing?
I, I would say roughly the same thing, yes.
Can the offending cube be moved beyond...
These cubes can be moved. Anything can be moved, but I can say that I anticipate no eventuality when they would be moved.
Right, but so right now they could be put within the correct 20, within that 25-foot section?
No, they cannot.
Could not be?
No. If, if you did that, you would, the cubes would be on top of the house, and I'd be back here asking for a variance.
And are the cubes connected to the main structure by a roof structure?
We went to significant trouble to make sure that the cubes are freestanding and are not connected to the deck or the house.
And just to follow up, a question that I had with...
Why did you do that?
Because I was advised by the code enforcement officer that they have to be separate standalone structures. I said, "Well, certainly we could, we could certainly put, you know, have the deck and the cubes use the same sonotubes." And the code enforcement officer said, "No, that would not be a separate structure. You have to have separate sonotubes for each." So we have separate sonotubes for each. There is no connecting point.
And just to follow up, so there's no way to have the main structure and the two cubes with an entire setback of 25 or 30 feet, whatever it is in the code?
There is not. The reason why we went with this design is because it, it enabled us not to tear down the building, and it, it added a small amount of square footage, again, think from that ribbon to that ribbon, in a very pleasing way. Apple Tree, Tom Egan in his email conceded that this was a nice design. It works well. It looks good. If I had torn it down and put up a two-story structure that towered over my neighbor, I'm sure nobody would be happy with that, although it'd be perfectly, I mean, we wouldn't be here tonight. It looks good. It will look good.
Do you have a picture of what it's supposed to look like?
I do not.
Do you have a drawing with you of the lot and where the structures are supposed to be on the lot?
I did not bring anything of that sort. I'm sorry.
Is it possible, notwithstanding your comments earlier, that there are separate, three separate structures, is it possible to connect the three structures with the roof or some other struc...
No, there's not. Then if I connected them, then they wouldn't be separate structures. They have to be separate.
I'm not agreeing or denying that point. Conceptionally, can the, the three structures be connected, and would the plan still work?
Is it physically possible?
Well, anything physi...
Yeah, right.
Right, so the theory is that, notwithstanding the comments, conversations that you've had with the code enforcement officer, that they need to be separate, can the three structures be structurally tied together?
Yes.
And still be pleasing to you?
I, I think that there's a scenario under which that could happen, and that was discussed.
All right, and if that structure was, the three independent structures became one?
Yes.
You are still over the setback of 25 feet?
You're still, oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah. It does not work without the setback.
Okay.
I have a question for Ben. Do I ask that now, or... If this proposal had come in sort of de novo as a structure, not as two cubes added on to the house, but I wanted, I bought this lot, I want to put this house with these two cubes on it. Do you understand my question?
Yes.
Would that have made any difference in whether or not you approved it?
No, it wouldn't have. If you, you'd be coming with a proposal to, you have a lot and you're building from scratch, and you propose a primary structure and two accessory structures with, with one permit, the accessory structures, less than 150 square feet, have a setback reduction from 25 feet to 15 feet. So we, there's been a lot of discussion of that. So Mr. Bond came in with his permit to build the two accessory structures, each less than 150 square feet, and we talked about the setback requirements. He then subsequently came in with the permit for, for decks, and I told him that you don't get the, you don't get the setback, you don't get the reduced setback if you attach decks to these structures because then they would become more than 150 square feet.
And hence the conversation that we had with Mr. Bond as to why they need to be separate.
Yes.
And does it matter, would it matter to you, would the size of the bedroom in the house matter to you? If it had three huge bedrooms?
No, I, I don't think it would matter. Would, would, it would matter that the house had all the components to be a dwelling unit. Be, and, and that's been discussed here as well. If you, you need to have the primary residence, the primary dwelling unit, in order to have those be accessory uses.
I had a follow-up question, Mr. Bond. Have you requested commentary from your neighbors, obviously with the exception of Apple Tree? Did anyone else comment, or did you reach out and speak with them? Do you have any back...
Well, the, the property we're talking about is right here. I'm sorry.
We have the map and the papers with us.
Right, it's right here. So I only have one neighbor. I have, I have Mr. Egan, who we know how he feels about this, and, and I've got Steve Jordan, who's right next to me. I mean, he, he and I are like this. And he is, I'm buying my beer tonight. I think I can speak for himself, speak for him and say he's very happy.
Did you get a chance to speak with anyone on Beacon, was that... Yeah, did you speak with them?
Our vast lot is totally wooded, so I can't see this property, this building from our area.
But I brought the dogs to the, he's rented all around, they're all, so, I mean, it's really a sea-cluster type of company where, like, there's nobody around there.
It's, it's unique. It's a unique little spot, and I think if you put in a big house, it would, it would, it would hurt it. It would, it would take away some of the appeal to the area.
Any further questions for Mr. Bond? Thank you. Before we get to rebuttal, is there any public comment from anybody else? Yes, sir? Can you, can you come up to the podium?
Hi, Mr. Sullivan. I'm a, I live on Two Lights Road. I just would make the observation that Mr. Egan's house, I would, I would think it's unlikely that he would be able to see this structure from his house. He has another property that abuts with a small house on it, but I, I don't see that his, there would be any visual impact with these, with these additional structures.
Thank you. Okay, attorney shoots.
Sorry, just want to point out that...
Can I just interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Just in case anybody's here for the fifth item on the agenda, which is the request of Edward and Sylla McCarthy, that has been continued until next meeting. So just in case anybody's sticking around for that. You can go on.
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, Mr. Bond has essentially said what I've been saying, which is that if you were going to approve these cubes as bedrooms, that's replicating the primary use and would not be permissible. His response to that is to say, "We may use them for things other than bedrooms." And if that's so, I would just encourage the board to condition any approval on not using these cubes as bedrooms in connection with a commercial rental use. And that way, you're keeping options open for residential property owners going forward, but we're not going down the course of having these small cottages converted into multi-bedroom rental types of units. I want to comment on the bathroom issue. I mean, our perception, obviously, is that this can be rented to anyone who can then make use of it without bathrooms attached. That does give us concern about it. There is a garage on this parcel that is restricted by a covenant to non-rental commercial use. I'm hearing that that garage has now been converted to be associated with this rental use. I think we're going to be taking that up with Mr. Bond separately because that garage was built within the setback and has an accommodation between the owners, and agreement was reached to place a covenant on it. I don't know that that's before you, but it's of concern. You know, I think from the code enforcement officer's perspective, my impression is that if it's short of a dwelling unit, the code enforcement might be seeing the, anything that's falls shy of being a full-scale dwelling unit as an accessory use. And I would just, you know, I think it's to the, for the board to provide some guidance there to say, "Look, you know, dwelling units, one thing, but you can certainly can have uses that fall short of a dwelling unit that are not all the way down at a shed with an, that would qualify as an accessory use." And I think we're there in, in this particular case. You know, obviously, under your ordinance, you have all kinds of structures that could be put to uses that are permitted and uses that are not permitted. You can have a structure that could be made into a restaurant or bed and breakfast. You could have the same structure occupied by the owner and lived in. You know, there are enforcement issues that would arise in any instance, but, you know, Apple Tree owns a number of lots in this area. We're concerned about property values. We're concerned about changing the character of the neighborhood. We're concerned about expanding these kinds of commercial, non-residential rental uses through this sort of accessory unit backdoor that's being proposed. Thank you for considering our position.
Any follow-up questions? Thanks. If there's not any more comment, then I'll close the public comment and argument and open it up for board discussion.
This is a little troubling. I see in Lacuna the rules. It also reminds me of the early application where we denied a variance where they can actually have a accessory structure in that space. That's disconnected. Why is that?
That doesn't apply to the front setback, but the setback...
The side back, the side setbacks can be less than up front.
Correct.
In the way I look at the definitions, these cubes are not a dwelling, accessory dwelling unit.
You mean they're not an accessory building or structure, or they're not an accessory dwelling unit?
Well, I look at two points. There was a definition about it had to have bathroom and equipment facility and sleeping arrangements.
Dwelling unit.
That's an accessory dwelling unit, as opposed to an accessory building or structure, which is what these are.
Right, so when I look at the accessory dwelling unit, it has to be somehow connected, if you will. That's the concept that I was thinking of there. So if it's, as we discussed, what happens if you just have a shed? Is that okay?
I mean, I think...
Yes, right?
Yes.
So the only issue that I see is that potentially people could sleep in this cube.
That's, that's kind of where I'm, the way I'm conceptualizing it is the argument seems to be, nobody's allowed to sleep there. And, and that's why I, to call, what, what are we're, we're calling it a bedroom or not, there, they can be used for a number of different reasons. They can be used for a number of different uses. Are we supposed to make some finding that they can be used for a number of different uses, but nobody shall ever sleep in one of these cubes? Because when does it become a bedroom? And, and the other thing that, at least in my mind, is the fact that the one full bath or the one three-quarter bath is only accessible via the bedroom in the primary structure, to me, it seems highly unlikely that those two cubes will ever be used full-time as bedrooms, because every time that somebody has to take a shower, you have to go through the primary bedroom. It's just, it's unlikely that a family of five or six would want to live for any length of time in these three cubes when there's one bathroom and it's accessible through the master suite. It, to me, it seems like these are truly, would be incidental to the primary structure.
Well, I go the other way on that. In fact, I find the fact that the septic system expansion is totally indicative that that's what these are going to be useful. They're going to be used for bedrooms, and that's not an incidental use.
So you're, I mean, but that's basically, so you're just discounting the testimony? I mean, so part, I mean, I think we're basically making, we have to...
It's not necessarily testimony. What we have here is conjecture about...
Well, it's not, I, I mean, we're, I mean, we're fact-finding. Part of what we're doing now is, is fact-finding and actually making...
Mr. Bond couldn't tell us what he was going to, and use these for, for certain.
That, that's fine.
I'm going to step in on the septic system. I mean, I don't know what the state of it was, you know, X number of years ago, but when somebody needs to replace a septic system, they would replace, I think, a forward-thinking person would say, "Oh, I'm going to spend tens of thousands of dollars doing a system. I'm going to build it for three bedrooms." Because that gives them a lot of potential in the future to change that, to expand that house. So I wouldn't, I understand where you're coming from, but I wouldn't look at it the same way that it was done for that purpose.
I mean, my, my view is, we are, I mean, part of, at least for this appeal, is, is making factual determinations, and I take it face value that we've heard testimony that there isn't a decision in terms of how that those structures will be used.
Then you have no evidence.
Well, I mean, the evidence we have is the testimony.
The testimony provides no specific evidence. So you can't make a determination based on a lack of evidence?
I mean, the testimony, we can take the testimony. It's, the testimony is the testimony. It's what he stated. I mean, we're not going to have, we're not going to have any...
There's no specific evidence offered to us here on that particular issue. What we do have is an admission that certainly the bedroom use is contemplated at least some of the time. That was testified to.
That's true.
Okay. And the question here is, is a bedroom use incidental to such structures? And I simply can't find that to be true.
So I asked earlier about the setbacks. If the entire, if both, if all three structures were contained within the setback, or, you know, outside of the setbacks, I guess, it would all be, we wouldn't be here right now if they were all, well, maybe we should be here. Basically, if all three structures are within the setbacks, or, I'm sorry, you know, if we're talking, if it was 25 feet from the property line, we wouldn't be having this issue, I think, because then we could say, they are dwelling units and they are bedrooms, and that's okay.
It wouldn't matter what--
It wouldn't matter, because we have a septic system, they'd be up to the code, you know, there's no plumbing, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why I ask, can he move one or two? And I don't see why, we don't have plot plans, but it seems like that could be the sticky point here. Because I also agree that he's going, he's really contemplating them being used as sleeping quarters. And I think it kind of skirted the idea, skirted the idea of setbacks since it's a accessory structure. Now it can be 15 feet instead of 25. But I don't buy into the commercial that it's going to be Motel Six. With the way the bathrooms are set up, that's, he's not going to separately rent each of these things.
Well, and then maybe, maybe in the case, we don't know--
Right.
But we also have to think in terms of future situations that arise. And clearly, if this were to arise in the future again, and you came up with somebody that puts four pods down, or somebody puts five pods down, somebody puts three pods down with a shower, without a shower, with a half-pot.
Ben, what would prevent, or would anything prevent, the current owner or future owner from putting bathrooms into the two pods?
The size of them would prevent it. They're 12 by 12 structures, and you couldn't, you wouldn't have room to both put a bed and a bathroom in a 12 by 12 structure.
What if you went up? I mean, what if suddenly there were two stories?
You wouldn't have room for a stairwell in a 12 by 12 structure unless it was, I suppose, an exterior stairwell.
I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of like--
If the structure was larger, I don't see anything preventing a bathroom from going in there.
If it was larger?
If the structure was larger, it's--
Then it wouldn't be, then it couldn't fit into an accessory structure, because it'd be over 150 square feet.
Well, no. The, I think the setback issue is confusing this on some levels. And I think Apple Tree, regardless of the setback, I think Apple Tree still has a problem with accessory structures being used in this manner. And it's, the, an accessory structure can be a 40 by 40 garage is an accessory structure. So the size of it is just to, just buys him five feet of setback is the only thing that the size does.
I think you mentioned Apple Tree. What you meant to say was, Mr. Bond?
No. No, I think Apple Tree still has a problem with the, with the use of these structures, whether they're 15, 20, or 25 feet from the property line.
They would still be challenging the structures.
They would still be challenging the structures if they met the 25-foot setback, because they have a theoretical problem with an accessory structure being used in this manner.
Sorry to put you on the hot seat here. On the lot now, there is a garage that's detached from the main structure?
Yes.
And theoretically, one cube could be within the 25-foot setback, not the two?
I'm sorry.
So, right. One of the problems that we're having is that we don't have a plan as to what these things are going to look like, or a drawing to say where it's going to be on the land itself. So I'm trying to receive information this evening, and there's some conflicting details here. I'm trying to reconcile, what's the lowest common denominator? And that is garage and the main structure, full stop, as it is right now. To increase within the setbacks so that there's no dispute between the Apple Tree and potentially the Mr. Bond, is that there could be one cube within the setbacks, not within the setbacks, that do not go over the, essentially, 25 feet away from the side of the property. Right? So the issue would become that there are two cubes. Is that correct? And so to get them spatially aligned, they go into the setbacks of 25 feet.
Correct.
So I'm trying to grapple with whether there's a solution that--
Oh, does he have a map?
This is the building permit, the building permit application.
Okay.
This is the septic system.
Okay. So what's the distance between the main structure and that first unit there, the first cube?
Looks like about six feet.
Theoretically, that could be attached to the main structure.
Yes.
But it would--
Go ahead.
But then it would-- I guess, just to back up, kind of considering hypotheticals about where else this can go?
Yes.
I mean, there was a permit that was granted.
Yes.
It's being appealed. So either the permit shouldn't have been granted, or it should have.
All enough, I don't know.
Aren't we kind of getting a little bit far afield of, well, how else could the house be reconstructed or in addition? Who cares?
On the ordinance, there appears to be a little corner, because it doesn't fit within the definition of the dwelling or the accessory dwelling. But when you get into the concept of have someone sleeping in one of those cubes, and they're having a subject of some large enough to cover those two cubes, it seems more likely than not that it's a way to get a larger structure there, but have them separate, if you will.
Well, I mean, well, we've heard testimony that if they just wanted a larger structure, they could have torn the house down and rebuilt a larger structure. So the decision wasn't, it, to me, at least, what I'm hearing is this wasn't done to try to generally get around prohibitions in the ordinance from having additional square footage on the lot. It was simply to maintain the existing structure as it is, because it's a cute house from 1960.
Yeah.
But then also to add some additional useful space. So they, again, if they wanted to, they could have torn the house down and built something that might have been 2,000 square feet.
But they, I can't recall a provision, but when you do a reconstruction or replacement, it has to be within the footprint or the normal setbacks that would allow a single-family dwelling in that location. Right?
Correct.
So when we use that analysis, that doesn't, it's not exact to the situation here, because what happens is that if you replace that home with a larger home, you still have to use the 25-foot setbacks. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's one scenario. So to completely remove and replace it, you have to do a 25-foot setback. If you leave it alone and maintain the main structure and then add two additional cubes, you're not subject to the 25-foot setbacks.
Correct.
Right. Well, there's a difference between those two points then.
Well, but if they recon, if they did a reconstruction--
Yes.
They could have added a second store.
No doubt.
So I guess I'm, what--
It's the issue, to get the benefit of five feet of the setback.
They have to be separate structures.
Yes. And those separate structures are not supposed to be dwelling units unless they are attached by the logic, yeah?
But they're not dwelling units.
They're, it's accessory, they're an, the argument is they're an accessory structure.
Yes. And then we get into what's the primary use versus a subsidiary use.
Right. Which I think is ultimately, I mean, the way this is shaking out in my head is, there's, I mean, that's, that's the determination, is our, is the, is the board, the board needs to make a determination whether or not these are accessory structures or not. I mean, I think that's really what it boils down to.
Because they're on sonotubes, does it matter to you in your analysis that it's a three-season home, a three-season cube, not a four-season cube?
Where does it say they can't be used for sleeping?
That's just an argument that's being made, then.
Where, why is there any basis at all for that argument?
Because it's a question of whether or not there's an incentive to use here for this structure.
It doesn't say they can't sleep.
Well, is sleeping an incidental use or not? Or is it in fact part of the primary use of a dwell?
I mean, I think the argument that's being made is that sleeping is not an accessory use.
Well, it seems to me, you know, again, again, this is, we're debating, you know, the head of, what's on the head of, I mean, this is about the word incidental. And there's nothing, you know, this is, this would seem to be permissible. It's like you can do these things, but you can't do a commercial machine shop. There is, there is nothing here that necessarily says you can't do all the other things you'd have in the house. This is like in addition to what you could do--
Well, actually, actually--
There's nothing that prohibits--
There is, because if you go down further and look at the accessory dwelling unit, you get into that issue, and that's what Matt was looking at.
That's for a single subordinate dwelling. These aren't dwellings.
That's correct.
There's no question.
That's correct. Well, but no, that's the issue, whether they are dwelling units, because there is in fact a primary use of the house being made in those structures.
But they are in separate dwelling, and they don't have a kitchen and stove and all those things.
They're just not an accessory dwelling.
They're just not an accessory dwelling.
Nor could they ever become one.
Nor could they become one.
Well, but they could be though.
There's not enough space. They're 150 square feet.
But also, as far as sleeping goes, are there degrees of sleeping? In that there's a primary residence, and then there's an attached bath, there's a kitchen, there's a fridge, there's washer and dryer, and the garage's next door to it, and so forth. Somebody lives in that, then they have guests, and the guests sleep in these really three-season, not, you know, not winterized 12 by 12 rooms that are located a few--
Well, actually, they are major, because they really--
Well, right. But as far as, they're on tubes, and so they're not, you know, it's not quite the same as, as, well, February Day here. But anyway, it doesn't, is there a difference between sleeping year-round as like a primary, a primary residence almost? Or is it just, hey, we're having friends over, and they're staying tonight? Or we're renting a cottage for a week in the summer and having our overflow guests stay in these things? I'm not, I don't, I'm asking, I'm not sure of the answer to that.
It seems to me we've kind of bought book lying and sinker, this argument, that it's, it has to be a restrictive interpretation of the ordinance. It's like, wait a minute. No, it doesn't. Number one. Number two, I go back to my earlier statement. I mean, if this can all just, if we're having all these debates, and the answer is, okay, the next guy in the door, just don't call him sleeping. When somebody asks you what you're going to do, it's going to be a garden shed. Doesn't say how long it has to be a garden shed. A month? Take the garden tools out, and they put a bed in. You're not regulating a structure. You're not regulating where it is. You're not regulating what it looks like. You're not regulating anything about what you're building, which is presumably what we have responsibility to do, because that's what impacts the neighbors.
Well, again--
You're not regulating one of those things.
That's why you look to the other factors that went into this. And the key factor for me, as I said before, is the septic system expansion. You wouldn't have to do that if in fact you didn't have that in mind in the future.
Well, I mean, unless, like Aaron said, you're, you need to, you need to build a new septic system, you're going to build a larger one to give your more, give yourself more options if in case you decide to tear the house down and build a new one. I mean, then you don't have to go and redo--
That's, that's right. And certainly, you could take one of these cubes, and you could have sleeping in one cube, and you could turn the other cube into two bathrooms. There's enough space for that.
You could do the same thing if you built them as a garden shed.
Well, actually, no, because if you built it as a garden shed, you wouldn't have to ask, get the expansion on the septic system.
I mean, if you originally built it as a garden shed.
If you originally built it as a garden shed, you wouldn't have expanded the septic system completely.
Could a bathroom go in an accessory structure, based on your theory?
Well, how about if you put a bathroom and a kitchen in one accessory structure, and a bedroom, two bedrooms in the other? Or just one bedroom?
Yeah, that--
What have we got now? What's the animal now? It seems to me, we still have a duck here, as you were saying. We've got bedrooms, and they're part of the principal use of a dwell.
You know, for me, this really boils down to what, what can an accessory structure be used for? And, you know, currently, we allow many uses in accessory structures. I have a stack of files back there of accessory structures that are used for sleeping space, you know, living space, bathroom space. As long as it doesn't comprise a dwelling unit, as long as it doesn't become a dwelling unit, it's allowed to be in an accessory structure. I mean, that's currently how, how the ordinance has been interpreted.
I mean, if, if that's the interpretation of the ordinance, and again, I also keep coming back to, we've heard testimony that the use of these pods has, is yet to be determined. I, I can't disregard that. I take that at face value. And so I, we don't know what's going to be in these structures. It could be a home office. It could be, who knows what's going to be done with these pods? Will somebody be sleeping in them at some point, sometime? Probably. But to me, that doesn't suddenly make them, take them out of the realm of accessory, accessory building or structure.
Yeah, and it's hard to penalize the applicant for upgrading their septic system, because they could have come in and said, "I'd like a permit for two accessory structures, a den, and an art studio, and I'm just going to replace a one-bedroom septic system." And it would have been less costly for them to, and a lot of people do skirt the septic rules by calling it something different. So it's hard for me to penalize the person for being forward-thinking about their septic.
And if, if we grant the appeal and overturn the permit, and then they apply, the bonds apply again, and they say, "We are building two workshops," where are we then?
That's my question.
Can't, I mean, at that point, we, don't we have to approve those? Because they're clearly accessory buildings or structures.
They said the right words.
So I, I just, I mean, we can, I get a sense that everybody may or may not have made up their mind. I know where I stand on this. I think if somebody wants to make a motion, or I'm kind of, I think we've kind of beaten this into the ground, unless anybody else has any comments or discussions, I think we should close discussion and see if we can have a motion.
I just want to revisit one particular point, then may we close? And thank you. On the definition of accessory building or structure, this is in the definition of the 1913, on page two. There's a reference to "a detached subordinate building, use of which is clearly incidental and related to that of the principal building, or use of the land which is located on the same lot as the principal building or use. For residential uses, accessory buildings and structures shall include, but not limited to, the following." And there's a list. The way I read hard facts of the code, the cubes can go within a setback of 25 feet. So as, as currently approved, I think it should be approved as well. In other words, reject the application by Apple Tree.
Reject the appeal?
Yes, reject the appeal. Just because that definition is broad enough to include the cubes. And I'm troubled with the definition of a dwelling unit, further pages over, is that it has, a dwelling unit requires cooking, sleeping, and toilets, all in one structure. That's why I was, I asked whether, can there be a roof over all three objects? And the answer is no. So it's, by definition, it's not a dwelling, dwelling unit.
And again, what we've heard from Ben is, I mean, what you're saying is these two are mutually exclusive. An accessory, if it's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's an accessory building or structure? Is that, is that generally what?
Yes.
The history of--
It's not an accessory dwelling unit. It's not a dwelling unit. It's an accessory building or structure, in my opinion.
Any further board discussion? Okay. Closed board discussion. Anybody have a motion?
We reject the appeal.
Anybody second that?
I second the appeal.
Okay.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Any discussion, any discussion on the motion? Okay, so all in favor of the motion to reject the, or deny the administrative appeal? Okay, so it's four to one, and the administrative appeal is denied.
It has to be, I would say.
Against?
Against.
Four, four, four in favor of denying the administrative appeal of Apple Tree Cottage LLC at 44 Southeast St. Lucie Boulevard, wait. Oh, okay. Of Apple Tree Cottage LLC at 44 Southeast St. Lucie Boulevard, Stewart, Florida, of the code enforcement officer's decision to approve building permit 150525. Findings of fact, on August 21st, 2015, the code enforcement officer approved building permit 150525 to construct two 12 feet by 12 feet accessory structures at 15 Sunrise Drive, map U14, lot 38. On September 18th, 2015, Apple Tree Cottage LLC submitted an administrative appeal of this permit. The subject property is a non-conforming lot in the RA zone. Additional findings of fact, I mean, I think the one additional finding of fact that I would propose we make is that the, the two 12 feet by 12 feet structures are accessory structures pursuant to 1913 of the code, of the ordinance. But I'm open to some discussion in terms of what other findings, I, I mean, I, I'm wondering if we need more findings? And what, what findings we need to support, support the denial.
Let me ask, this is a question. Since it's an appeal, can't we just say we support Ben's findings? This isn't like we're doing a variance to the code. We're just saying, you're the technician, looked like a duck to you, ta-da. I, I think if we go beyond that, and we start making our own-
Sure.
Decisions, you know, you're kind of opening yourself up to a lawsuit, or-
We're not finding-
Like you're opening yourself up.
Right.
Ben's, we're saying, we, we've heard all this stuff, we've heard all the facts, we support.
Okay.
As a counterbalance to that point, I would just, if we're going to have other findings, whether the certain other definitions in the code do not apply. So, we, we do talk about the 1931 section, but why the other two sections don't apply?
I, you know, I think, I kind of tend to feel that Ben made the determination that they're accessory structures. The appeal was arguing that they're not accessory structures, and we're denying it, so it's basically that we're, we're standing on Ben's approval and issuance of the permit.
With respect to Mr. Chairman, I believe that your responsibility is the de novo review. Do you have to review this as though you were sitting in Ben's shoes? And deferring Ben's findings will clearly lose a lot of appeal and product of that comment.
Thank you. Based on my past history on this board, that comment is well taken. We've, we've been overturned before based on our standard of review, and if this is in fact a de novo review, we should not defer to Ben's findings of fact, lest we be back here in a year. So, Mr. Bond has submitted some proposed findings and conclusions, so I would suggest we at least initially work off of these, and we can tweak these. Does everybody have a copy of them? I'm just, I'm just going to read, I'm going to start reading through these. I'm not, I don't think we need necessarily all of them, but, so, finding number one, Christopher Bond is the owner of the property located at 15 Sunrise Drive, the property's located in the RA zone. I think that's already in there. So that, that's, that's kind of covered by findings of fact three that we already found. 15 Sunrise Drive, a butts property owned by Apple Tree Cottage LLC, I think that's fine. The house at 15 Sunrise Drive was built in the early 60s. I don't think we need, I mean, unless others disagree, I'm not sure we need kind of this history of Sunrise Drive, and when it was built, and the size of it.
We'll probably skip it into number eight, I would think.
You'd, you suggest skipping to eight? Let me just, how's this? Yeah, I agree. So-
Or we can even, make that favorite, we determine them to be accessory structures.
Say that again?
Can't we just say that we determine them to be accessory structures?
We determine that they are accessory structures? I, I mean, I think that's sort of what it comes down to, my mind is, do we need some, do we want to have some support in the findings for why they're accessory structures? And, and I, I'd like to, at least I would suggest that we incorporate some findings as to why.
No, sleep, yeah.
So I think if we were to jump down to eight, which is the 12 by 12 foot structures were not designed to be bedroom-only buildings, the 12 foot by 12 foot structures were designed to add space for unforeseen, unanticipated, or incidental use that will augment the small primary structure, anticipated but not definite uses include but are not limited to sleeping space, home entertainment space, home office space, hobby space, general living space. I mean, just kind of as an aside, I don't mind adopting some of these because this is what was proposed by Mr. Bond, and if these findings ultimately are overturned, this is, you know, this is, this is his suggestions. But I don't think we need all of them. So I, I like number eight and number nine. I don't think we need 10. I don't think we need 11. So I would propose including eight and nine as findings, and I do like, you know, again, I, you know, conclusion A is the 12 by 12 foot structures may not be used or rented independently of the principal structure. I mean, I like that on principle, but I'm not sure, do we need to go there and sort of put in additional restrictions? They're restricted as they're restricted under the ordinance and the use is under the ordinance, so I do like B, the 12 by 12 foot structures are clearly incidental and related to that of the principal building or use of the land. I don't think we need C or D. I think G helps support the board's finding, or-
I think you're mixing conclusions that are each-
I, 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 I was just thinking that. I think- I might add G as a finding. All right, let's try this. So these are the additional findings, and stop me if anybody disagrees. So we have one, two, or there. So the 12, so I'm going to go back. The finding of fact, number one, on August 21st, 2015, the code enforcement officer approved building permit 150525 to construct two 12 by 12 foot accessory structures at 15 Sunrise Drive, map U14, lot 38. On September 18th, 2015, Apple Tree Cottage LLC submitted an administrative appeal of this permit. Three, the subject property is a non-conforming lot in the RA zone. Additional findings of fact, the 12 by 12 foot structures were not designed to be bedroom-only buildings, that's number four. Number five, the 12 by 12 foot structures were designed to add space for unforeseen, unanticipated, or incidental use that will augment the small primary structure, anticipated but not definite uses include but are not limited to sleeping space, home entertainment space, home office space, hobby space, and general living space. That's number five. Number six, without the 12 by 12 foot structures, the principal building is entirely functional and able to service the needs of one or two people at most. However, with the accessory structures, the property will have adequate space for incidental living and sleeping requirements, including as they may arise, hobbies, home entertainment, home office when needed, and guest family sleeping space. I think I would stop there. Other than to say that the board finds, I guess the conclusion would then be, the board finds that the 12 by 12 foot structures meet the definition of accessory building or structure in the town's ordinance. So all in favor of those additional findings and that conclusion? So four in favor and one opposed. Okay, I think we can wrap that one up. The next issue is number three, to hear the request of John M. and Sue Ann Higgins for a variance to construct a 26 foot by 26 foot garage addition to their single-family dwelling at 15 Vernon Road, map U19, lot 7-34. Mr. and Mrs. Sue Ann Higgins?
Mr. Maxwell, before you begin, Mr. Maxwell's my neighbor, oh, sorry, Mr. Royal, thank you, is my neighbor, he lives four or five homes away from me. If that's an issue, I can step out of the audience, otherwise I'll listen to the-
I can't hear what he's saying.
Do you feel like you can be impartial?
Yes, Mr. Royal is a builder, standing with the, the owner and applicant. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sue Ann Higgins, and I live at 15 Vernon Road, where we've lived for 47 years. The neighborhood is 40 plus years old. We are asking for a variance to build a 26 by 26 foot garage. I have pictures of all the houses in the neighborhood. We currently have the only house without a garage, and as you can see, the garages were built with, when the variance was at 15 feet. The majority of them are at 15 feet. There's a couple that are at 25, no, they had to get a variance. But at any rate, we, our request is to have a 26 by 26 foot garage. It doesn't all need the variance, isn't that just part of it?
What you're asking for is a three-foot variance.
Okay. I didn't know I was going to be doing this tonight, so this is off the cuff, but at any rate, as far as the size of the garage, I'm a nurse, my husband's a PSS, we are caregivers to the elderly, and we do have wheelchairs and walkers, and that 24 inches in the garage makes a huge difference if you're using medical equipment. There isn't any other option to put the garage, and I'm not sure if I need to answer any questions, or-
So it's, the variance is, it's a, it's three feet from the side setback?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing impaired, so he has to tell me what you're saying.
So you're asking for a three-foot setback.
Okay.
On a side yard.
So on that, so if we're looking at the house from Vernon Road, the garage will be on the right side of the house?
Yes.
And so what will the setback be after that?
It'll be 22 feet.
22 feet, and the setback is 20?
It's 25.
And what, do you have any idea what the setback, the current setback of that neighbor on the right is? Like, are they very close to their line, how far away are they from their line?
Could you, and-
I guess, I guess, there's the neighbor to the right.
Yes.
Are they-
Oh, they're 15 feet to the, or 18 feet to the property line, from the house to the property line.
Thanks.
The neighbor to the right. Also included in the package is a letter from that budding neighbor.
I had a question. On, is there an overhang on the side of the garage, to the right of the home? It looks like there's, is that less than five feet, or less, what's the .5 from the edge of the property?
Is there an overhang on the, on the house?
On the, on the garage.
On the garage? No, no, there's no overhang. On the gable end, you mean?
Yeah.
No, it's going to be flush.
I do have a full-size copy of the survey, if anyone's having trouble reading the smaller version.
Something about a survey.
Somebody had a full-size copy.
No.
If anybody would like to see it.
I have four copies.
So in the application, it says there will be no adverse effect to the natural environment, this, there's no trees that are being taken down?
No, there's some shrubbery that are, is beside the house that will have to come down, but there's no trees.
Sorry, Chair, on the first, sorry, it's the first picture after the, so there's a car, and then there's a shed behind the car.
Got it.
The shrubbery is that pine tree in the corner of the house, it looks like a pine tree.
There's a YWAT tree.
And then these over here.
Is that the right?
This is 15.
All right, it's a large cherry tree here, it's not going to be touched.
Yeah.
That's going to stay.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know if these, these other garages are also, are non-conforming? Do they also-
The majority of them are.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer that correctly? They are not conforming.
They are non-conforming.
Right.
So they-
Which meant to you they're-
They encroach into the-
Right, they're at the 15 feet that when our neighborhood was built, that's what it was. I think that man just told me I had-
Any other questions? Okay, hearing no public comment, I'd like to open it up to board discussion. I'll just start by saying that I think this is a complete application for a variance. It's very similar to variances that we have granted in the past, particularly for garages that are, you know, encroach a small amount into a side setback. And based on the ample evidence that's been provided about other homes in the area, this looks very much in keeping with the nature and character of the neighborhood, and I would be in favor of granting the variance.
I agree. I agree. What were variances for?
Would somebody like to make a motion?
We approve the request of John M. and Sue Ann Higgins for variance to construct and attach garage in their home at 15 Vernon Road, map U19, lot 7-34. New construction is proposed to be 22 feet from the side property line, while the zoning ordinance requires 25 feet.
Somebody second that?
Second.
Any board discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor? So that passes five, nothing. Now read the findings of fact. John M. and Sue Ann Higgins are the owners of the record of property located at 15 Vernon Road, map U19, lot 734. The subject property is a non-conforming lot in the RA Zone. The zoning ordinance, section 19-4-3A1A, requires the side setback to be 25 feet. The proposed expansion of the principal structure will be 22 feet from the side property line. Additional findings of fact, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. The granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of the abutting properties. The practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. No other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. The granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment, and the property is not located in whole or in part within shoreland areas as described in Title 38, Section 435. And in the conclusion, there is no substantial departure from the intent of the ordinance, and a literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause a practical difficulty as defined by 30 AM RSA, Section 4B353, 4C. All in favor of those findings of fact and the conclusion? I have nothing. Thank you. And moving on to the last order of business for today, it is to hear the request of Peter and Laura Marston to reconstruct and expand a portion of their non-conforming single-family dwelling at 55 Hanaford Cove Road, map U14, lot 6. Mr. and Mrs. Marston?
Chair, it's been a busy night for Hanaford Cove Road. These are my neighbors, I know them, so I will recuse myself and sit in the audience.
Okay.
We purchased this house in, this past June recently, and just to give a little bit of brief history, it, the house, the existing dwelling was from 1920, two sisters owned it, and in 1950, part of the dwelling was added on to. In 2009, our current neighbor, whom we bought the home from at 53 Hanaford Cove Road, Eileen Calico, we purchased the home from her, and she did some brief remodel to it in 2010. After we purchased the home, we decided that we would like to expand to the existing dwelling, given mostly to the fact that the crawl space was exposed ledge and there was no attic at all. So we were looking to add a barn-like structure to the rear of the home with a room with living space above. So we're requesting to reconstruct, reconstruct and expand a portion of our non-conforming dwelling based on the fact that there is no other buildable alternative on our lot, given the current RP1, Critical Wetland Buffer at 250 feet, given the fact that our current septic system, which we do not plan on changing, is directly in front of the home, and our side setback, of course, our existing dwelling is within that setback currently. So the only place that we can expand would be directly out the back of the house. I'd like to note that we are using existing walls, a rear doorway to the house, and roof lines for this reconstruct and expansion. Also, our only neighbor that this addition would be affecting would be at 53 Hanaford Cove Road, Eileen Calico, and she has written a letter on our behalf. I'm not sure if you guys have received this, I did not include it two weeks ago, but I'll read it and then I can hand it to you guys. It is my understanding that Laura and Peter of 55 Hanaford Cove Road are requesting the opportunity to build in addition to their home. It is also my understanding that the setback is non-conforming. I am the abutter at 53 Hanaford Cove Road. I support the Marston's request and have no concerns regarding their plan or the setback. Oh, you guys got it.
And that's part of the record?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, I'd just like to note that on that part of Hanaford Cove Road, every structure on each side of us is substantially larger, including two car garages, than our current dwelling, so I do not believe that it would change any character to the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Any public comment?
Good evening. Not withstanding my earlier recusal, my view is a member of the public, and I'm also a resident on that street, and I, my name is Matthew Keaton, for the record, and I support their application. Thank you.
Thanks. I didn't support this, but I guess I just have one question about, about the final, additional findings of fact, number two, the proposed structure will not increase the nonconformity of the existing structure. Does it not increase because, and there's the 14 feet, I think, I mean, basically, I don't know, is it, is it actually not, isn't it actually increasing the nonconformity because there's more building along that setback?
I think we've had this issue come up before, and, I mean, generally, the approach that the board has taken is that it's increasing the nonconformity if you are further encroaching into the setback, but if you are simply lengthening the structure...
There's more encroaching going on, is it clearly?
It is, it is clearly defined, thank you, Ben. And this is, in the definitions section, increase in nonconformity of a structure. Property changes or structure expansions which either meet the dimensional standards or which cause no further increase in the linear extent of the nonconformance of the existing structure shall not be considered to increase nonconformity. So...
So, it's, where did you, where is the language, the linear extent?
Starting...
Yeah, yeah.
So there isn't even any common sense balance, so it's, the original structure was four square feet and the new one's 300, but it doesn't go further into it?
That's the ordinance. Any other board discussion? Somebody like to make a motion?
To approve the request of Peter and Laura Marston of 55 Hanaford Cove Road, map U14, lot 6, to reconstruct a nonconformant structure based on section 19-4-3-B-3 of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
All in favor? So that is approved for two, nothing. Yes, thank you. Findings of fact, this is a request of Peter and Laura Marston of 55 Hanaford Cove Road, map U14, lot 6, to reconstruct a nonconforming structure based on section 19-4-3B3 of the zoning ordinance. Peter and Laura Marston are the owners of record of the subject lot. The subject lot is a nonconforming lot in the RA Zone. The nonconforming structure is a single-family dwelling with an onsite, with an on-site septic system. Additional findings of fact, the zoning board of appeals has considered the size of the lot, the slope of the land, the potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system, and other on-site soils suitable for septic systems, the impact on views, and the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. The proposed structure will not increase the nonconformity of the existing structure. And three, the proposed structure is in compliance with the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. All in favor of those findings and additional findings? For nothing. And, thank you. And the communications update on Verizon, so that new business number five has been continued to the next meeting, and communications update on Verizon appeal.
The short story on the Verizon appeal, there were two parts of the appeal. Were the antennas on the water tower allowed by ordinance? And the second part of the appeal was, were they allowed by the Federal Spectrum Act? The court ruled that they are allowed by ordinance, that the water tower is an alternative tower structure.
Right.
The court also ruled that it did not qualify under the Spectrum Act. It's not remanded to the zoning board, so, so it will just continue in its process and be referred to the planning board for additional review.
Okay, good. And with that communication, got a motion to adjourn?
So...
All in favor? We adjourn.